Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's the common council meeting, August 18th, 1992, 7:30, well, almost 7:30 PM. Call and roll, please.
Mayor?
President?
First Ward?
Here.
Second Ward?
Here.
Fourth Ward?
Fifth Ward?
Here.
Sixth Ward?
Here.
I'm present, Your Honor.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, please.
Resolved that the special use permit request submitted by Mark and Michelle Sherman for a multiple-family dwelling unit for their property located 753 South First Street is hereby referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation to be returned to this council at a future meeting.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carrie, second, please.
Resolved that the zone change request submitted by Kurt Brown, Sr., from R1 Residential to R2 Residential for his property located 1202 East Broadway in order to qualify for a home occupation permit is hereby referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation to be returned to this council at a future meeting.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carrie, three, please.
Whereas the meeting this council held on August 4th, the special use permit request submitted by Vincent Zai to convert a garage to a single-family dwelling unit for his property located 203 Pine Street was referred to the Planning Commission. Whereas per the minutes of their meeting held on August 10th, the Planning Commission recommends that the special use permit request be approved. This council agrees with the Planning Commission's recommendation. Now therefore be resolved that the special use permit request submitted by Vincent Zai for his property located 203 Pine Street is hereby approved.
We have to advertise for a public hearing, don't we?
Yes.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carrie, four, please.
Resolved the following bills will be approved for payment. Martisco Corporation, $1,109.03 for fire hydrant and gate box. Jones Chemical, $2,019.11 for ferrochloride. Agua Petroleum, $1,624.49 for gasoline. Babcock Oil, $2,858.20 for grease and diesel fuel. Oswego Solid Waste, $10,898 for tipping fees. General Code Publishers, $1,005.73 for code supplement number 15. The above items are budgeted, but over the council, $1,000 limit requires the council's approval.
Motion, please.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carrie, five, please.
Whereas the meeting this common council held on July 21st, a public hearing was held relative to a proposed amendment to the Fulton City Code entitled Animals. Whereas after the public hearing, members of the council expressed their views on this matter as well as the public, the proposed amendment was referred to the ordinance committee of the council. Whereas a proposed amendment to the Fulton City Code has been submitted for approval, now therefore be resolved that proposed amendment number to Chapter 58 of the Fulton City Code is hereby adopted.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carrie, six, please.
Resolved the city chairman is hereby authorized and directed to transfer $499 from the A1210.43 account to the A1210.20 account.
Is that something we should all share? Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Resolved that the city chairman is hereby authorized and directed to transfer $499 from the 1210.43 account to the 1210.20 account.
Motion, please.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carrie, seven, please.
Whereas the New York State Legislature by virtue of Chapter 643, the laws of 1992, has made available a retirement incentive program to local governments. Whereas this legislature permits such local governments who participate in the New York State and local employees' retirement systems an opportunity to provide special incentive benefits to the regular retirement plan members who have the appropriate amount of service credit required by members' tiers and who will attain age 55 on or before December 31st, 1992. Whereas the common council of the City of Fulton, New York, elects to provide the untargeted or open retirement incentive program for the eligible employees of the City of Fulton, be resolved that the common council of the City of Fulton resolves that a public hearing concerning this local law number one of 1992 entitled "A Local Law Electing a Retirement Incentive Program for the Eligible Employees of the City of Fulton" be held at the common council chambers on September 1st, 1992. Be it further resolved, city clerk be directed and shall do the appropriate publication and notice of this hearing.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carrie, eight, please.
Resolved that this common council directs the fire chief to receive quotes to move fire circuits on Altough Poles on Cedar Street as well as the southeast corner of Route 481 and Rochester Street.
Motion, please.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carrie, 10, please. That was really eight and nine.
Resolved that the area of the proposed gift shop, flower shop with accessory office use located at 122 Academy Street being hereby exempted from Chapter 75 of the Fulton City Code entitled Fire Limits. Be it further resolved that it is in the intent of this resolution to exempt said area provided that gift shop with the accessory use located at 122 Academy Street is not used for residential purposes.
Motion, please.
One second. We were gonna ask Marv if he had looked at that at all.
We're gonna remove the, I'm feeling like Swiss cheese on fire limits. Fire limits is a problem. We had several times, I think, that it just looked over, a lot of restrictions on what people want to do in a certain area that really don't understand. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna sit down and look at the fire limit areas and see if, uh, we're gonna do such as, in the new building codes, uh, the way they are in the business operations, uh, I think there's some areas in the city where they can handle.
When is it gonna be done?
Well, as soon as we can get everybody together to, in the meantime, uh, eliminate that section of the, of the limits.
Can the resolution be changed to stay eliminating fire limits on that address?
I don't think we might, particularly as I'm thinking, we just wanna try to find the folks for what they're having. Right now, they're pretty much comfortable with it.
Well, is there any objection to eliminating that address?
That's right. You know, they do that address.
So we simply change the wording from wave to eliminate?
Right.
And you don't have a problem with this?
Really, what our question?
No, go ahead.
I move it.
I'll second it.
Wait a minute, before you do that. Joe, the resolution now reads, in place of the word wave, the word eliminate is substituted.
Okay.
With that change, somebody wanna offer the motion?
I move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carrie, 11, please.
Resolved that the following bill will be approved for payment. Valney Multiplex, $1,113.43 for repairs to telemetry at Batavia Tower due to lightning damage to be a direct charge of the F-8320.45 power and pumping account. The above item is not budgeted, is over the $1,000 charter limit, requires the council's approval.
Motion, please.
Your Honor, before we make a move on the motion, Joe, is there any of that that can be reproduced through insurance?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carrie, 12, please. That's tabled, right?
Yes, Your Honor.
13, please.
Resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a quitclaim deed to Edward and Margaret Short Sleeve RD6 Rathburn Road to Oswego, New York, proportion of Hannibal Street dimensions eight feet by 100 feet to remove an encroachment in front of their premises at 401 Hannibal Street.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carrie, 14, please.
Are we gonna hold that until any special meeting or next meeting or something?
Oh, yeah, that's gonna be tabled until we get more information.
Resolved that the DPW Commissioner accept the quote of Central Builders, 58 South Sixth Street, Fulton, New York, in the amount of $5,890 for renovations of the restrooms and break room at the DPW Garage. Be it further resolved, the city chairman transferred said amount from the contingent account into the proper appropriation account.
Motion, please.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carrie, 16, please.
Resolved that the mayor is authorized to sign an agreement between the City of Fulton and the Oswego County Health Department to purchase vaccine under the federal consolidated contract for hepatitis B vaccine pursuant to the OSHA bloodborne pathogens, 29 Code of Federal Regulation CFR 1910.1030.
Motion, please.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carrie. Under discussion, we have the item one, solicitor's license. Is, uh, Ann Marvio Snyder here? I thought she was gonna be here to explain it to me. Do you wanna wait, hold us until the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Tabled for the next meeting. Item two is also tabled to give the council a chance to review the new proposed building code. Anyone have anything they wanna bring up? David?
I have just one question. I received a call from one of the constituents of my ward, and, Bucky, this is for you, if I could, and they wanna know about an employee opening and entering the city garage before hours, and they weren't in a capacity of supervisor or whatever. Do you know anything about that?
Yeah. Yeah, we, those guys go in there early in the morning, they've been going there for over 20 years. They go in there and they have coffee and they just read the paper and whatever. Been doing it for 20 years, there's nothing wrong with them.
I disagree.
Why?
Ross, would you mind putting the cane down, please?
Now, what is your objection to employees reporting early to work? That's a new one.
Uh, no objection to employees reporting early to work. My objection is a man having keys and not supervising position in the City of Fulton City Garage, what, we got an assistant to the assistant to the assistant now in the city?
Ross, I have to point something out to you.
I'm gonna point something out too, George.
No, I'm gonna point it out to you. That's within my prerogative as the executive of this city. It's not within your prerogative. If I see there's anything wrong with it on your complaint, then I'll correct it, okay? If I don't see anything wrong with it, then I won't correct it. Well, I'm not always gonna agree with that, but...
I'll, I'll, I'll tell you one, George.
Okay, we'll discuss it later, Ross.
Your Honor.
Wait a minute, wait a, wait a minute. There's no place in this meeting for that kind of comment, no matter who it's directed at, okay?
Your Honor, I have only one concern over what he has said, and it was the fact of the insurance liability and the fact of a person being a building that they're the sole person in there, and us being liable for them without supervisory capacity in that building, that is a concern.
That's a valid point. I'll take it up with, uh, Mr. Graham. Anyone else have anything they wanna bring before the council? Okay. Motion to, to new executive session.
Move. You, you want? I'll second it.
Pardon?
I second it.
Is that a comment, or is that simply a noise? Yes. Alice?
Question, did you pause the meeting?
No.
Yeah, everyone, do what you gotta say. Alice Saboda, I haven't been here for these cat and dog things, and I noticed tonight that it was passed. Now, I have nothing against cats or dogs, there's a place in this world for everybody, but will this affect the pets only or the stray animals? 'Cause we have a place in back of the super duper that every winter we have that eight, nine cats that are born there with a mother that's just getting cats all the time, and I don't know, what will they do with them? Because they don't belong to anybody.
Alice, you can, you can read my copy.
Okay.
Okay? We already had a public hearing on it, and I'm not gonna get into...
I know, but I mean, will... No, I don't want to, but I mean, will it, will it affect, 'cause it says pets here. Is it only for home cats, or will it be for the wild ones, the ones that...
It's for those also.
They what?
We will, we will go out and answer a complaint as, as it's called in, and act on it accordingly.
'Cause when I called about these cats, we fed them for a long time. I couldn't stand seeing cats starving, and we fed them because there was no place, and when I called about them, they said, the city said they couldn't do anything.
That's 'cause we didn't have an ordinance at that time.
Now they'll be able to take care?
Now we can, now we can act.
Okay, because I didn't want this to be just for pets, and then the wild ones will still be running wild, you know? 'Cause they just don't have a home to go to, and there's nobody accountable for them, so they can be put away and nobody to claim them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Listen, Mayor, I think the way the common vote picked the article in the Hill Times on August 13th, can you use the microphone? Mayor and council members, this time I'd like to reflect on the Hill Times article of August 13th as dictated by Mr. Velez. It appears that Mr. Velez is unhappy with everything and everyone, particularly...
Wait a minute. No. I'm not gonna let you hard go ahead and make any personal comments about an article. If you want to refer to the article and come up with some facts to refute that article, first place, I didn't write the article. But if you got some, you got some facts from that that you wanna refute, then fine.
Well, my question is the facts that you've come up with on closing the, or closing the West Side Fire Department and having a volunteer fire department.
So?
Well, we're, we're curious as to what facts you have regarding that.
Read it, read it.
Well, in the first place, uh, what does that got to do with anything on the agenda?
I'm asking you a question.
No, it's not under, it's not under discussion.
There isn't any, anything in the agenda relating to that article. It's simply my opinion about what might have to be done if the city's finances are in such serious state that some drastic action has to be taken, that's all.
Yeah.
Would you, gentlemen, do me a favor? If you wanna speak, ask to be recognized and come up in front instead of making cracks from the audience.
I'd like to make a statement.
Well, go ahead.
Can I continue reading my statement?
If you have any facts to refute the article, if you... Do you wanna come up and make a statement, or do you wanna continue to make cracks from the audience?
I just, Alderman Haust, I was concerned about a man in DPW not being supervised. We're concerned about firemen not having a lieutenant. That's not... There's a statement. Now, we have three men working every fourth day without a, without a supervisor, and they're working and calling shots to have life in those situations, and you're not...
Are you, are you telling me that prior to the time the lieutenant's position was abolished, that there never was a shift when there wasn't an officer in charge?
Swear to God.
Well, your chief told me just the opposite. He told me that there were times in the West Side Station when there wasn't an officer in charge.
Or, acting officer.
Well, yeah, what do you do? You take a, a line man and, and you make him an act...
Remember, you remember, put an end to that.
You make him an acting lieutenant? Is that it?
He goes to school.
He is half acting. He's on the list for promotion.
Yeah, but he hasn't been appointed.
He hasn't.
So you take a lineman, because he's passed the exam, and you make him an acting lieutenant, is that right?
No, he has to, he has to go to school for six weeks behind...
But he's, he's still not, he's still not an officer.
He isn't, because he has to go to school for six weeks behind our...
No, he has to be appointed, you know, there's a, there's a big difference.
That's what we're telling you.
Yeah, but...
There's a big difference. We got three men who haven't been appointed, haven't been sent to school, and are we, and are responding and calling shots with the...
No, I'm talking, I'm talking to about prior to the time that that lieutenant's position was abolished, your chief told me that there were men who were not officers who were in charge of the West Side Station. So, it isn't true you...
They have to go to school, they are paid out of grade...
Wait a minute, one at a time. One at a time. Sit down. One at a time.
Right now, our procedure is if we have a, an officer off duty, that there will be somebody who is qualified because of schooling, who is not an officer, who works in his an acting position, is paid out of grade, grade because of the responsibilities entailed of that position, and we've got three people now who do not get that.
But he, he is still not an officer. That's my point. Point is that prior to the abolition of that position, there were times when there was not an officer in charge of a shift, and nothing has changed since then.
Yes, it has. We have somebody working that's not, is put in a position of responsibility, who's calling shots for, for millions of dollars worth of property, lives, and he doesn't have the training for it.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
If I might, reading from their contract, it states that there has to be an officer in charge per shift. As far as I know, whether it be East Side and West Side Station, we only have one fire department, and it requires one man per shift. The dual entity is strictly something that they've incorporated themselves, and it is not stated in their contract.
That is, that is City of Fulton procedure. That is not something we asked for, that is the city's policy.
What's, who made that policy?
God knows what fool.
Well, it had to be the fire department. The city doesn't make policy for the fire department.
They don't?
It's only what's in the contract.
You just took firemen away, or a fire department officer away, and that's policy. It's now our standard policy.
Well, Fulton, the city never made the policy there had to be an officer in charge in the West Side Fire Station.
The fire department's part of the city's policy in the fire department has always been that there will be an officer in charge of the West Side.
It does not call for it contractually, sir.
Our rules and regulations say there will be an officer on the West Side Fire Department. Our rules and regulations...
I disagree. In your contract, it does not.
Our contract is incorporating the rules and regulations of the department promulgated by the fire department, the fire police commission who was appointed by the city, is policy that we live by. That is not something we negotiate, that's what we've been given by the city. We're only asking to have what the city has given us in the past put back in place.
Apparently, the fire department is unwilling to make any changes at all to address the serious financial situation the city faces.
We, I have been to two executive sessions, one with you and one without you. All we, all of them understand the situation. There's a, we negotiated, we do have an eight-man minimum contract.
Yeah, I know.
And we know you...
One of the few cities in the state that does.
Well, the, the reason...
You know what amazes me, though, what I have trouble figuring out, is why 30, 40 years ago, fire department was one-third the size it is now without a manning requirement. You had more fires, you didn't have mutual aid, and yet they seem to cope very well. I, I wonder why that is? And why a city, why a city like Cortland, which has 35 against our 37 firemen, twice the size of Fulton, without a manning requirement, and the mayor there says he does very well.
The Cortland Fire Department is manned by college students who have a bunk room in the firehouse. When the full City of Fulton has a college incorporated in the city and they can do that, probably that'd be a smart idea.
More volunteers, right?
Nope.
So they're basically volunteers, aren't they?
They're at the fire, they, they...
Well, so they're volunteers.
There is not a, there is not a department in the state that have been paid departments that have gone back to volunteer fire department.
Yeah, but there are in the state that have volunteers.
Yes, there are, but there's a lot more who can't find volunteers, and the city of, the town of Duitt right now is paying drivers and, and officers during the day, during the week, because they cannot get enough volunteer department men.
Well...
And that was from a volunteer...
All I can say is, if the council...
Industry and commerce went to the town of Duitt and told them that you've gotta do something. We don't have the coverage, our insurance...
Another, another thing I, I find it hard to understand is why, when you had an average of around $7,000 a month overtime, suddenly in July, it's $19,000, and you're saying to replace...
Well, we wonder why, why we can't understand that.
May I finish? To replace one man, you jumped $12,000 in overtime? Is that right?
No, we've had, in the last 10 years, we've had five-man power cuts, three of them in the la, in three in the last one year. And when we negotiated an eight-man minimum, it was done because of safety. At one time, we were running with five men on a truck, and one guy had never even been on a truck to go to a fire, and had, had no schooling, was considered a man.
What happened to the, what happened to the plectron system?
The plectron works fine.
So, within minutes, you can have the whole department at a fire.
But in seconds...
Not to mention mutual aid.
But in the seconds of, the first seconds of a fire, we were, we were in a stamp for where we had one person had never been to a fire in his life, and one other man going in on a hose line into a fire, into a burning building. Now, I don't feel if that's safe for me or for any of the people sitting in this audience...
Well, why would a man go in the burning building if he wasn't qualified in the first place?
Because that's what he was, his job is.
Even though he isn't...
He's a new man on the department.
Even though he isn't qualified to do it, he's gonna go in, you know, like...
Hey, that's what he's hired for. He was hired, he wasn't sent to school, he was sent in a truck, he was counted as a man.
It seems strange to me, too, that a 35-man police force who are not only short of men, who was laid off, and who are working daily at a very dangerous job, they seem to function very well, and yet their overtime is down instead of up, and they have two that are out on disability.
I'm not arguing the police department, I don't know how they operate.
I find it very hard to understand.
I do know how we operate, I know who I represent. I wonder how you represent. You say you don't understand these things, though yet we've told you. It's a bitter pill to swallow.
Well, there are cities all over the country and in the state that because of their financial problems are cutting one city as many as three-quarters of the department. Some cities that are going all volunteer, some that are consolidating fire and police, and some that are consolidating fire with the surrounding towns. Yet here, we don't seem to be able to make any sacrifices at all. Our infrastructure is going to hell, frankly. Our roads are so bad that we can't begin to fix them. Our water and sewer lines have to be replaced, and we got other things. We have a shortfall in the budget as of now, right now, of $677,500 that we do not have to pay for the current budget. Now, Mr. Halsted tells me that I'm underestimating that by another 100, $600,000. We're facing a railroad reduction assessment of 44.6%. We're facing an expense with a Nestle project of $300,000. We have the tax assessment, tertiary actions by Silrite and Blackfossen that probably will cut their assessments in half, and we don't even know what we're gonna have to pay for closure of the Van Guren site, okay? It's not too difficult for me to understand why fire department is not terribly concerned about the fact that we may have to raise the taxes by as much as $39 per thousand, up to $54 per thousand, just to meet these budget demands, because half the firemen don't even live in the City of Fulton, and the other half, the remaining half, are so near retirement they don't care. And that makes it pretty obvious. That makes it pretty obvious why the fire, fire, fire department doesn't care how high our taxes go and how many-
Excuse me. You live in the-
You people either sit down or have the police remove you, okay?
You live in the city. How many taxes do you pay?
Now-
You live in the city. How much do you pay every year in taxes?
I don't know the total. We've got three places we're paying taxes on, my wife and myself.
How much?
I don't know what the total is. There are three of them. Probably about three thousand dollars.
I pay three thousand on my own house.
So what's I got to do with, uh, the city tax in the City of Fulton?
Well, they're not as high as that.
I mean, it doesn't matter to you how high our taxes go because you don't live here.
That's not true.
And that's true of half the department.
That's not true.
So they don't care whether our roads are in disrepair. They don't care whether our water and sewer lines are re- replaced.
George-
They don't care whether industry leaves the town and people lose jobs because that's what's gonna happen.
George, I spend more time and more money in your city than you probably do.
I doubt that. I doubt that. That's got nothing to do with the point.
One of your worries-
The point is that the cost for overtime for the fire and police departments is cutting seriously into our budget, is making it impossible for us to repair the infrastructure and maintain the city and make it attractive to business and industry. And that what happens is people start moving out, and certainly when those taxes go up the way I predicted, you're gonna see them move out in droves. So that's gonna make your problems look pretty, pretty small.
One of your concerns is high taxes. How many of our area industries would build up back in Fulton if they burned out?
You know, you're talking about that these kind of calamities are gonna happen, they aren't gonna happen.
We have fires in Nestle. Listen, we have fires in Nestle frequently.
Yeah?
They have old buildings.
Gee, that's funny, you know, Valney has fires frequently too, and Miller, they seem to be able to take care of it all right.
Yeah, 'cause we go to them.
Pardon?
We go to them.
Well, that's, well, that's mutual aid.
That's right.
So you got a fire in Fulton?
They've got volunteers, we're a paid department, so we're there faster than they are.
So if you have a fire in Fulton, mutual aid comes to Fulton's aid. That's what it's all about.
That's right.
Well, all I can tell you is that, you know, if the thing continues as it is, then it's gonna mean much higher taxes and if industry starts moving out, and they've already threatened to do it, then that's gonna mean a lot of changes in a lot of departments.
As I said, Nestle's, Nestle, Silrite, Blackfossen, all have descriptive buildings that would fit the description of being old and decrepit. If they have fires, none of the three of them are doing so well that they're gonna be building back in Fulton.
Do you think that-
And then new businesses that come into this town, one of the first things they're gonna ask for is what kind of a fire, their insurance and themselves are gonna come to the city and they say, what kind of fire department do you have? Right now, Fulton Fire Department is about one of the only services Nestle's gets for their money. That they don't have to pay up beyond their tax base for.
Yeah, that's because of the city's in tough shape.
If any new business comes in here-
It seems like-
Hey, we have your turn. Robert's rule says I've gotta turn.
If we're following Robert's, Robert's rules, why is everybody shouting out when you're talking and the mayor's talking?
Because I can't talk over him.
No, before. You people are not, and if somebody wants to tell me to shut up, I don't just stand up and tell me.
Your own building inspector is gonna go find out how they can, are gonna help protect them, their own business from fire.
They're gonna wanna know a lot more than just what kind of a fire department. They're gonna take a look at our streets, they're gonna take at our water and the sewer systems, they're gonna take a look at the, uh, the state of repair of the buildings, they're gonna look at a lot of things, not just the fire department. And right now, they take a look at our infrastructure and they're gonna be appalled by what they see. We don't have the money to do the things to improve our infrastructure, we don't have the money to take advantage of the new Canal Act that gives us the right to build on the canal and provide, uh, facilities for business and expand. We don't have the money to do a lot of things. Seems like everybody in the city is willing to, uh, make sacrifices except the fire department.
I've got a question. If a firefighter were to be rehired, what's that gonna do to the overtime?
It's gonna have started eliminating. Right now, the cost of, the cost to the city in manpower hours of overtime is created because the city has cut the manpower. We do have a minimum manning for our safety and for the public safety. We are running right now, most people in the city do not know what we're running with. We have eight people at any one time running out of both stations, which means that we've got two drivers, two officers, and we've got, basically, they're gonna have one or two, two people are gonna be on a hose line at any one of your people's fires at your houses. That's not very many people. When your house and your, is burning, you have to have a rescue, uh, help somebody get out of a burning building. We've got to get ladders off trucks, we've got two people out of that. Right now, there's a, we're responding actually with seven people because it's, we have an officer, a man at the desk who calls in, off, or off-duty crews, and is bringing a backup truck if he, if it's necessary. Um, we respond, it's up, the two truck operators man the pump panels, do not leave the truck. So basically, you've got three and four at best firemen fighting your fires at your houses. Until the plectron system, which does work real nice, is activated, we get off-duty firemen come in, and we also bring in mutual aid. We have high respect for the fire departments and the volunteers that come into the city. They, they spend a lot of, their own time here, they have their own equipment, they bring it in, it's no charge to the city. But so do we also go to the council, out in the volunteers districts. We right now cover a radius of at least one mile outside of the city in Valney and Granby, and farther if it's a situation where there's a life at risk. We have major real estate that we're covering over on the, on the West Side Department. If they close a station down, we've got people that are in the west side of the tracks over there, that we have a train splitting the city. We've got schools, we've got major industry over there, commercial buildings, you've got a major propane distributor, distribution area over there. We have three churches that we, we cover outside of the city limits, on our mutual aid system. And right now, the best thing that the city has got is our quick response time.
Can I ask you a question, sir?
You're welcome.
You're talking about seven men on duty. You're short a man that would bring you eight all the way around. Is it not in fact that you have a dispatcher on duty at all times and he's the ninth man?
No. He's the eighth man.
Eighth man, no. You're saying you need the ninth man?
No. We are, right now, we have-
Seven and one is eight, as far as I'm concerned.
We have a minimum manning clause of eight men. Because of the cuts, you have cut us right to, when the minimum manning clause came into effect, we had ten-man crews, four ten-man crews. It was never intended by us or by the city who negotiated the contract that we would be running with an eight-man minimum. We now run with an eight-man minimum because of safety, and by doing that, when there's somebody on vacation, every time that somebody's on vacation and is sick, you're automatically creating overtime. Now, that is, seems easy for George to understand. Now, if you bring people back, you're not, right now, you, your own alderman can give you facts and figures that will tell you that if you're stupid not to bring the person back.
You know, the bottom line still is, what can we afford? That's really what-
You can't afford our overtime.
That's what we're, well, you're creating the overtime.
We're not creating our overtime. You created the overtime.
You're creating the overtime with the eight-man minimum manning law. That's what you're doing.
No, we are. That was a counter.
Okay.
That was not us creating the overtime.
Well, how safe, how safe, how safe, how safe can you get? You know, there's never enough of anything. There's never enough policemen, there's never enough firemen, there's never enough DPW men, there's never enough, we're running short on the recreation department, we're running short in water and sewer department. You know, we're running short of a lot of things that we'd like to have, but we can't afford. You know, that's what the bottom line is. Hey, I don't care.
The bottom line is eighty percent of our overtime is caused by, caused by your manpower.
You know, I really don't care. My age, I have the, I have the luxury of not really caring that much. The council wants to restore those positions, that's fine with me. And, you know, when the crunch comes, well, then we'll, guess we'll pay the price.
Could I ask the council members if they would pass a resolution bringing the manpower back?
This has to be decided in executive session, and then they'll, because it's an executive, uh, session proposed.
I'm asking-
And that, when we get back out here, if they wanna propose the resolution, they will. Okay?
The city wants to save money. I'm telling the city that the way they're gonna save money is by bringing the man back. You're paying twenty thousand dollars a month in overtime, which is not caused by us, it's caused by manpower cuts.
If I, you expect me to believe that, then I'll believe that pigs can fly.
The contract exists for now until ninety-three.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna adjourn to executive session.
Excuse, e- excuse me. Jim, this council president, you and I both voted not to, uh, get rid of these two positions. Uh, I would like to offer tonight a resolution to restore the position of a fire department.
Thank you, Mr. Lincoln.
Now, John, and you and, and Jim also voted for the eight-man, uh, part of the contract that's killing us with overtime.
That is not killing you with overtime, only because of the situation you've put the fire department in, George.
I didn't put anybody in, I didn't vote, it's the council that voted it.
Greg.
Okay.
Would it be impossible to run the fire department with just seven men until there was a fire? Wait a minute. And then call them in if you need them, so we can save this overtime and maybe give the police their contract and the CSEA a contract and work with us?
Mr. Bellthor, I have tried, I have talked to each one of you individuals except for Mr. Halsted about what we could do and what we can't do. I have never heard anybody come back to me except for a few of you, and I can't tell you what I can do right now, just like, because you don't know what you're gonna do yourself next. You don't have plans. Mr. Lev proposes plans. His plan is to shut the West Side Fire Department down and have volunteers.
But it isn't shut down. Nobody decided that.
But that's what he's proposing. The statement in the paper-
I'm not proposing anything. I object to that form. I'm just saying what the possible results can be if the city is in a severe financial crunch. Okay, I know what I said, and I didn't make any proposals that I was gonna submit to the council. I'm only saying what can happen here down the road, and anybody that thinks it can't happen has got their heads buried in the sand. There's a motion before, or a resolution before the council. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second him. I'd like to have the clerk read it.
Well, how can you second it if he hasn't read it? You wanna withdraw the motion and have him read it first?
Go ahead.
Could I, could I say something before you make the-
No, we got a motion before it. There's been enough talk, we're gonna pass, we're gonna vote on the motion.
Could I, could I just say one more thing?
No. Uh, I never-
Thank you, George.
Gonna vote on the motion. Say, you don't care? Got one all written. They gotta have someone to pick on. Never can tell.
For a section C-115 of the city charter entitled organization, the fire department reads in part as follows. The fire department shall consist of a chief and assistant chief, captains and lieutenants, firemen and call firemen. The number of captains, lieutenants, firemen and call firemen shall be determined by resolution of the common council and may be increased or decreased at any time by resolution of the common council. Now therefore, be it resolved that the common council hereby declares that one position designated as lieutenant being the same hereby is added effective immediately. Be it further resolved that the municipal civil service commission is hereby authorized and directed to comply with any and all applicable laws, rules and regulations of the state and local civil service law, rules and regulations, and take any other action which is necessary and proper. Be it further resolved that the total number of lieutenants in the City of Fulton Fire Department upon adoption of this resolution shall be increased from three to four.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
I'll, I'll have her all vote please.
That's what I was gonna ask for.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
I've got a couple comments. I think that, uh, the eight-man minimum manning is really restricting the, the city to be able to manage its, its costs. But right now, with that in the contract, it behooves us to hire an additional person because of the overtime cost. Overtime costs have gone up substantially in the last two months, and if we continue at this rate, we would anticipate an excess of seventy thousand dollars over our budget in overtime costs. The cost of a firefighter would be around the twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar range. So numbers-wise, it behooves us to hire the firefighter back. But I'd like to be monitoring the overtime costs very closely, and they better go down or we'll do this again. I vote yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
No.
Sixth ward?
Okay, it was understood by me that we were supposed to get a recommendation from the fire and police commission before we did this, and we didn't get a recommendation from them. And, uh, furthermore, I think it's a shame that we only have one bargaining unit in the city that has a good contract and does not wanna give and help the other bargaining units. And I believe because the police and the CSEA does not have a contract, I vote no.
Motion is carried, your honor.
Thank you. Your honor? Chief. You received an order from me to submit certain, uh, items on overtime that I haven't received. What I received from you was not in response to that order, I expect that order's gonna be carried out. Thank you. Your honor? Tom?
I'm standing here for obvious reasons. I hope this body, it was done jointly. The lieutenant from the fire department was eliminated, that was the case for us. Now, Mr. Lincoln, I ask you to do the same and have us, give us, give us the same considerations as the fire department. And I promise you, and you all know it, we're not talking about the same kind of costs here. We're talking a thousand dollars for restoring traffic lieutenant. Chief Stafford wants a traffic lieutenant, we need a traffic lieutenant. I'd like same consideration.
I believe the traffic lieutenant is very important to the City of Fulton. I do. And, uh, you know-
You have a lieutenant that is available who can serve as a traffic lieutenant who is presently on disability and has agreed to do it, Lieutenant Heelo. That's one of the things we want to discuss in, uh-
Could, could we go into executive-
Executive session.
Could we go into executive session now and talk about that?
Well, if we don't have any other discussion, we can.
Yeah, one, Anne Marito Snyder is here now, if you wanted to go back to the discussion item.
On the solicitor license? On the solicitor's license?
Yeah.
Do you wanna make comment on that now, Anne, or do you rather wait? Okay.
Okay.
It's already been tabled.
I move to go into executive session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no, carry it.
Excuse me, did you close the meeting?
We're coming out here.
That's true. Yeah. What are they gonna do with the school?
Adjourn from executive session.
Public session. Wonderful. Okay, we have a resolution to adjourn from, uh, executive session back to public session.
I'll make the motion.
Second? All in favor, indicate by aye.
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 Opposed by no, carried. Joe?
Resolved that this common council hereby retains John Burton to prepare preliminary appraisal of the Sealright and Blackfossen companies at a cost not to exceed one thousand dollars.
I'll move it.
Second, uh, excuse me, and Eastlake Apartments as well.
And?
Eastlake Apartments versus the city of Fulton.
And Eastlake Apartments?
Yeah, there were three.
Okay. At a cost not to exceed one thousand dollars.
I'll move it.
Second?
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, no, carried. We have any other resolutions?
Nothing tonight.
Okay.
Guess we can, we can move toward, toward adjournment.
Oh. Cindy, you said you wanted to address the council. Okay? All right. Yes?
Yes, it is. We are taking the, uh, animals to, uh, Dr. K. L. Hodgson, Tara Angell Hospital. And the cost is eight dollars per day.
How many days do you want to keep a cat?
Four oh five, under, under Agon Market's law, yeah.
Will it kill him on the fifth day or will it kill him on the sixth day?
On the sixth.
And how much will it be?
But, but let me just clarify this. If a cat comes in, now he's a professional, he's been in the business for twenty-six years. Um, if we go into an area where we are trapping cats, where they go to him and they are diseased, uh, they have leukemia, they'll be put right to sleep. Uh, you know, he will do all the specific work, uh, to make sure that the animal's healthy in the whole nine yards, and if he's not, he's gonna put him to sleep. These, these are the, these are the disease-
Will he catch them?
Uh, he will do all the specific, uh, necessities that he has to do.
And we'll pay for that? With the, with the bad addition?
No, no, that, that's including the eight dollars a day, you know. Normally they are charged five dollars a day. That's what a normal rate is if you go to any animal place to store a cat, there's a five-dollar storage fee.
And how much does it cost? You have a cat, is that it?
Four dollars.
Four dollars? So that's eight, uh, forty, forty, forty dollars a day. Well, I'd like to let you know that, and I wish my dad, he was a businessman, he did too. About three weeks ago, he said to me, "I hope this doesn't fail, he can survive a pandemic, he's a very good cat." And I asked him why, and he said, "Because I have many clients who come in here and they don't even have proper shoes on their clothing, or they don't have a winter coat." And when I tell them the cost to take care of the cat, I look into their eyes and I can't refuse to be, and I know they don't do it. And he said, "The word is going to be out with the poor people in this town who live near the fountain, to put their animals into Fulton." And I said to him, "Oh, no, no, they stated it by trapping the cats inside the front." And he said, "No, that's the politicians who say that." So perhaps a letter should be edited now by myself in every paper encouraging people who for some reason don't mind being spotted with bringing their cats to Fulton will help you with your budget problem. And second of all, I don't think you can put a price on a house fire. As you know, I suffered a death state once or two years ago. And I don't think that I should worry if there were seven firemen there or ten. Damn, I'm happy that they were there, it was on a weekend, they have mutual aid committed, and I don't think that we should be down with seven. I think there may be should be ten for each of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have a wonderful police department and fire department. I've heard nothing but accolades, uh, for both departments from various businesses and industries. You know, that's the comment I'd like to make regarding both departments.
Got anything new to add, Phil?
No, I have a question.
Okay.
I'd like to clarify on the arm of lieutenant's position, will that cost you to go from a firefighter? Or that is the first?
We recreated-
I don't know.
The lieutenant's position. So you would be back to where you were, say, in May. A firefighter would move up to lieutenant, and you'd have to replace the firefighter position.
So there ever, there ever was a dog who replaced a firefighter?
Well, you don't have to do it by resolution, it automatically creates a vacancy that has to be filled.
Um, I have a question, are, how many traps do we have in the city to be testing out now?
I believe we have two. And we're gonna be purchasing a few more.
I hope this is going to go over time, but I do hope this is right for the audience. I'll look at it, how many traps do you have in the whole state?
You know, like I say-
Well, wait a minute, John.
I know, but we have-
John, wait a minute. As far as the procedure is concerned on the trapping, that's up the animal control officer, okay? There isn't anything that the council, the council doesn't have to respond to a specific procedure that's gonna be followed and dictated by the animal control officer. I have no idea at this point.
I think we're gonna probably, by, by probably four more.
Do we check every twelve hours?
Yep.
Say, I think that people will be paid extra to come in. Even if he doesn't, he can't check, say that he puts the trap out at six o'clock in the morning, then he has to come in at six o'clock at night, which he'll pay him, he did, so he checks on the traps?
We will follow all the, uh, all the guidelines.
No, wait a minute. We're not gonna go on like this all night, Cindy. If you've got any questions about the procedure, then you go to the animal control officer and ask him. We're not gonna sit here the rest of the night answering questions like that, okay? You're out of order, please sit down. Please sit down. Is there an officer present? Please sit down. Down. Anyone have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move the motion.
Second?
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Carried.